This time the board will hear Greg White. From Overdome.
Hi, good afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts about the Wassey Speedway. I'm in Middlebury Township. And my concern is, is that the history of the current consent agreement was based on citizen complaints. That's what prompted the consent order. And since then, there was another attempt to change the consent order. And that was not accomplished, again because of citizen complaints. My complaint now with the attempted change has to do with a couple of things. One, the definition of motorized vehicles. In the original consent order, consent agreement, the vehicles were specifically defined excluding snowmobiles. Now, it's any motorized vehicle excluding snowmobiles. And I haven't, I don't have the imagination to think what else could be motorized besides the obvious cars, trucks, buses, ATVs, go-karts, motor homes, RVs, what else they could be racing over there. My other concern is, has to do with camping. The original consent agreement prohibited camping. With camping that has gone over there, they don't have the room for the parking and the camping. And it was caused parking to be on 21 and Carlin Road. I don't know where the parking or the camping is gonna be. Is it on the premises? Is it on the county property that's owned next to it? I don't know. It's not defined. I don't believe changing the consent agreement to allowing more practice time, more days per week to practice and race, extending the hours of the racing and extending the season is a benefit. I, that's my complaint. And I appreciate the opportunity to express it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. This time the board will hear Mr. West.
Thank you. My name's Merle West and I am the Plumbing and Mechanical Inspector for this town, the city of Corona. And I was made aware this week that, of the mechanical work that was done at the jail. So the city office asked me to come up and explain this. Number one, we really don't have permits for the work that was done. There was no inspections were done. And even if, you know, the permit was pulled and no inspections were called, I find it hard to believe that I could show up to your jail and just show my badge, say, "Hey, I'm your plumbing mechanical inspector. Let me walk around and check this out." I really don't think that they would allow me in due to security. But having said that, I mean, every board member here has worked with the building department in this town, you know, for, for the course of your time here. I used to be the inspector here. So I know I used to get calls and stuff. And board members used to be in our office asking about different projects, whether they were for or against them. So we know that you all know how to pull permits and how this works. And the other thing is, is in this job, it doesn't sound like the public got what they paid for. Okay? So that's part of what we do here is inspections. We make sure the public and you as homeowners and people, number one, is safe. Number two, you're getting what you paid for. It doesn't sound like that's what you got. Now, I haven't been over there. I've just been made aware of this. And the contractor hasn't called to set me up to go over there and do the inspection for you. So it just sounds like a lot of missteps were made. Especially, why would you pay a contractor? Every contract that has a contractor maintenance or construction in it has a line in it that says it's the contractor's responsibility to call, to get permits and secure permits and get inspections before they get paid. So whoever paid this contractor didn't follow the contract that should have been written properly for. So I, and then, you know, I go to the office yesterday and they're saying that persons on this board were badmouthing us for not doing these inspections or following through. It's simple. You pull a permit, you call for inspection and we're out there. Plain and simple. It happens every day of the week. It's not that hard. I, I don't know why they want me to stand here and explain this to you. They wanted me to. I just, to be honest, it sounds like there was a breakdown all around and the citizens of this community did not get what they paid for. And that's, I guess, all I got to say about it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Yep.
Can you respond to that? I don't, I don't.
I'm here. Go ahead.
I don't wanna argue.
Go right ahead.
It wasn't, it wasn't an attempt to badmouth the city of Corona or the county or the city of Wassey. It wasn't an attempt. It was an attempt to get answers. And you just answered a whole bunch of your questions.
Okay.
By coming here, so I appreciate that. And by you stating that there were never any permits pulled and that, I'm assuming, is the contractor's responsibility.
That is the contractor's responsibility. And every time you do a maintenance or construction contract of any kind, those are just automatic lines that go in there. I mean, your lawyer or whoever does your contracts, that should be automatic. I mean, if it's not, I mean, it should be, you know? And then for the person that actually does it, like when you have a furnace changed at your own house, water heater, you know, typically you can hold the portion back until the inspection's done, you know? So that's, that's way you can feel it's like, I mean, I don't know what any of you do for a living. I'm sure you all do a fine job. The only person we know that does a living for yours, the guys in uniform that do a fine job too. But I'm here to represent you as a third party. It's like I come into your house, your business, your homes, whatever, to say, yes, it's good, pay the guy. Or no, let's change this before you pay him, or however that works. But it should be in cooperation, you know? It should be a cooperative thing. And that way we can all get what we want and the citizens get what they paid for, you know?
Well, I'm the one that's been shooting this mouth off, so it's not the entire community.
Well, I just.
But it's, but you answered the question. And what I had were questions, and I wouldn't bad, I wouldn't accuse anybody of anything, but there was definitely a breakdown. How can we have, how can we have, be cited for code violations if proper procedures been followed? Permits pulled and checked off and all that. Obviously, that didn't happen.
And I have a track record with this community. I've been working in this community for over 15 years. When my phone rings, you get an inspection, okay? So that's, you know, I have a reputation for that. And I, you know, that's when, you know, I hear things like this, well, like, wait a second. You know what I mean? I, if my phone rings, I'm there. That's what we do, so. All right, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I guess I just wanna talk to the commissioner, not necessarily do what. So I understand that if we put in all new HVAC units up there, that probably either our buildings and grounds supervisor or the contractor should have gotten a permit book. Where is a line drawn as far as, there's work done at that jail on almost a daily, if not weekly, basis? I mean, do we have to have permits for changing faucets? Do we have, is there, do we have to have permits for every single thing we do over there?
Would you like me to answer that for you?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, in our code, and because, number one, you're hiring licensed contractors to do the work, okay? The contractors know, 'cause they take tests on what, where the line is. Simple maintenance, and you know, you're, you're working on something that's already there, chances are, no, in the way that I like to explain it is what I call the As and the Rs. If the definition of what you're doing is adding or altering, then you always need a permit. If you're adding an air conditioner to a heating system, you're adding, you know what I mean? So yes, you need a permit. If you're altering the design of the system, the design of the building, yes, you need a permit. Now, if what you do starts with an R, as in replacing and repairing, okay? Now, now that's where it's more of a gray area. If you're repairing, typically, no, you can repair most anything, you know what I mean, without a permit. Now, if you're replacing, you know, certain things like electric breaker panels, furnaces, water heaters, major appliances that are, that are, I wanna say hard-connected to something, those, the answer is yes. But, you know, but if you're, you know, like your refrigerator, wheels in and out, you know? No. So, but, you know, typically, I try to tell the people, the personnel in our office and stuff, that if you follow the As and the Rs, you're typically pretty close to where you need to be as far as permits goes. Did I explain it right? Did I lose you there?
And I'm just, you know, at the time, I was in charge of buildings and grounds. I did not know then that permits weren't taken out. But as being in charge and we're all kind of working over this buildings and grounds, we need to know, we need to know where the boundaries are to make sure that we are following compliance. 'Cause I don't think anybody sitting here doesn't wanna be compliant.
Right. Especially like a jail situation where you have people that are sitting there that can't go anywhere. You wanna make sure that the ventilation's right, that the, you know, the exhaust systems are the way they're supposed to be and those types of things, you know? So, you know, just 'cause they're sitting there, you know, you wanna make sure they're still, you know, stay good, you know? Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, this time the board will hear Les Schreiber from New York.
Hi, guys. I got a question as far as our last VA meet, which Irene and I are part of. The subject came up about using the service millage for peacetime veterans' transportation. That was because the 214 millage was modified here about a month, month and a half ago. Changed slightly, but it took, it took our ability to use money for peacetime veterans to help them out. So to deal with that problem, we decided to put it in the millage, you know, change the wording for the new millage, and made a motion as to use it. The bulk of, you know, part of that money has us for transportation for peacetime guys. So there's really no differentiation other than one served during a wartime period and one didn't. We're all veterans. We all have access to going to the VA and we should have access to transportation to get there. So the motion was changed up there by me as to not put it down, as in you wrote it down here, consider authorizing Department of Veterans Affairs to create a line item for transportation solutions out of the service millage. And I'm going, it's as, well, there's other ways of getting people from point A to point B other than just dealing strictly with transportation solutions. So I modified the motion to cover the peacetime and use the money for transportation. Make it a little broader paintbrush to cover more ways of getting people, veterans, back and forth to the hospital. But I see here, this reads, you got two items here. One for the transportation solutions out of the service fund for $14,000. And then you got another one on the bottom line as is considered budget amendment, same service millage for veterans' transportation ineligible for 214 funds. And there are two differences. One was $14,000, the other one's $75,000. I don't remember us ever making two motions. I thought we only made one motion and it was to cover transportation, period. So what I'm asking is, is that I'm questioning this, these two, these two ways, where did they come from? Did they come from the VA? Who sent the information down and made it into two motions? As, 'cause it was only one thing. Yeah?
I asked that a line item be created as per your request. So now it's a budget amendment that we're now approving. And in that line item, I believe there's already $75,000. There's already an existing line item.
Okay.
And there's that much money in there is what I believe.
And that's, that's fine, as it both, then why do we?
So it's just that we're approving the, your request and now we have to approve the amendment to that line.
But what about the $14,000?
It's already in there. Already in there.
So we're getting $90,000?
No, it's already in the 75. The 14's already in this. This, this creating of the 14,000, you've already got well over 14,000.
Well, I was just wondering, 'cause it doesn't, it doesn't read that way. It reads like two separate line items, two separate amounts.
No, but you guys haven't used the money anyway. So you already have well over the 14 plus another 14 plus another 14.
And that's what we're trying to do, is use the money and be accountable for it.
But it does say 14,000 in the current money, it's, right? 14, like you say, is part of the 75. It's part of the 75. It seems. 'Cause the line item has well above and beyond the 14,000.
Yeah.
And you want it added. So now you're at 75,000, in excess of 75,000.
Okay.
You're good.
I was just checking, 'cause it sounds like it, there was questions.
You're good.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Is there any other member of the public I would like to make comment this time? All right, hearing none, we would move on to our presentations. This time the board will hear the Chiawasi County Register of Deeds 2017 Annual Report. Hillary Kim.
So I presented so well on Monday. You want an encore tonight?
We know you should, we know you'll keep it short.
I will. So money's collected in our office totaled $1,968,065.14 in 2017. Page one of the report gives the breakdown, what went into general fund, what went to state transfer tax and so on. Of that amount, $533,410.54 went into the general fund. Page two of the report would give you the breakdown per month, what went into, what came from the register of deeds, like the recording fees or copies, and what went from the county transfer tax. There's a 20-year comparison. In 2017, we were up $138,248 that went into the general fund. Difference between '16 and '17. Revenues versus expenditures on page four shows you that our revenues were $533,410.54 and our expenditures were $249,679. And then I list the number of employees that we have had since 2004. From five employees down to three employees and. Page five will show you how many documents we've had through the years. In 2017, we had 12,095 documents recorded. And that was up close to 500 documents from 2016. Do you have any questions?
Do you want me to fill in any blanks?
Would you like to?
I'm just curious how this compares to last year's report at this time.
We are about the same from '17, is that what you're talking, '17 to '18? We're right about the same. So hopefully it will go up, but it hasn't yet.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Register. All right, at this time, we'll move on to the Economic and Physical Development Report. Commissioner McCaster.
Mr. Chair, I am going to move to consider something in place on file travel to County Register of Deeds 2017 Annual Report.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a vote for discussion, is there any? Hearing none, all in favor of item A, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item B, I move to consider authorizing Resolution Number 18-04-1 for adoption of county equalization values for 2018 and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
A motion and a second. Open for discussion, any? Hearing none, all in favor of item B, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side.
Item C, I move to consider approving the total equalized valuations on L4 4024 to finalize equalized valuations by local jurisdiction, Form 4037, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
A motion and a second, open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of item C, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion passes.
Item D, I move to consider approving revisions to the building and trade inspector contracts, including previous approval of fee per inspection and addition of requirement for contractor liability coverage.
A motion and a second, items open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of item D, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item B, I move, I move to consider Resolution Number 18-04-02, consider authorizing amendments to Article 4, Section 4.3.28 and Article 21, Section 21.2 of the county ordinance is allowed planning commission to waive certain specific requirements pertaining to a historical facility or old-style wooden barn and apply to similar established uses such as greenhouses, nurseries, and so forth.
A motion and a second, items open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of item B, moving forward with the other. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Please forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner McMaster. Moving on now to County Finance and Administration, Commissioner Root.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to consider authorizing a request of probate family court to sign a deputy sheriff to serve as a full-time bailiff. Estimated annual cost to start at $82,477 for court service. A portion of the estimated annual cost can be covered by certain courts on.
Court.
Do we have any? A motion and a second, this item is now open for discussion. Commissioner Custer, lead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curious, this relates to the warrants that I have facing, fulfilling that need with part of this position, is I understanding?
I don't know necessarily that it's valid on the face, correct? Right, it'd just be this individual.
The sheriff's department's prepared to do that. I don't think that has been something in agreement that's been reached at this time. Even if we did create this position, we would be willing to accept it later. So at this point in time, we've been talking to the courts. We have a meeting set up with the lean people and we'll be prepared to do that later on, assuming that the court will say this.
Mr. Chairman.
So I have been talking to the sheriff and we're trying to set up a time when we can get, sorry, the lean officer. And we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting, I hope, hopefully again next week, to carry on with that part of this job. So right now, this, this motion is just to put a deputy in over there. And hopefully, next week's meeting, when we have it. I don't have a date yet. I'd be glad anyone that wants to come is invited. And hopefully we can get this hashed out and get that part taken care of also and start getting it done.
Commissioner Root.
My vote yes on this would be that it would be serving that need and filling that void of the warrants. So if that's gonna continue to be a further discussion and we're not gonna do it, then my vote today will be no for this position then.
Commissioner Holt, hold.
I, is this a new position then? You spend an extra $82,000 and you never had one before?
I don't know if they've never had one before. Have they had, had probate? It, it would be a new position and, as I understand, and you heard last night, or the night before, from the probate court, they're willing to provide some of that funding. The exact amount that they would need from the county board, I believe, was in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $35,000, somewhere around there.
I'm just worried about all the other departments going ahead to run somebody else too, so that's my concern.
I would just say my concern is for the safety of probate judge and staff over there who have been assaulted and have had numerous issues with people appearing before them or family members that are in attendance. So I think it is necessary that we provide security up on the second floor. It's my understanding it's also that deputy's gonna have other responsibilities in addition to potentially the lean responsibilities also. Is that correct?
That's correct. He would serve a number of functions. And one would be a warrant officer. The probate court has a number of outstanding warrants that they haven't, the people haven't been arrested on, the monies haven't been collected. For example, they may be unpaid attorney fees and things like that. So this is an opportunity to have somebody go out and actively pursue those people on those warrants. In addition, the deputy would serve as a transport officer for the probate court when there's cases where juvenile's gonna be transported to Saginaw. Also, when the probation parole officers go out, maybe to the residence to meet with a child or something that may be truant. There's always that risk of going alone and that deputy would be able to accompany the probation parole officer from the probate court. So those are just a few of them. There's probably more duties that he would serve, but those are certainly some of them that we've discussed so far.
Mr. Holt, hold.
I talked with Mr. Hill and he said he has two buttons there. The one that push a button, the whole county, all the deputies would be there. He's always got another button, the security guard downstairs.
Ask Sarah Edwards about when she was assaulted a couple of weeks ago. See what she says.
Yeah.
Ask her two employees who have been assaulted and they've had to detain juveniles and try to get them locked down.
I'm just saying what was.
$30,000 is a cheap price to pay for security of our employees. People get very emotional when their parental rights are being terminated or juveniles are being sent away.
I think they just really did establish the possibility of a volatile situation when you're terminating a parent's rights to the child. They are very, very dangerous situations, really have the potential to be.
Thank you. Just for clarification, Commissioner McMaster, you said for $30,000 and it just gets.
Our, our portion would be $30,000. The probate court would pay $50,000. But like I said, you know, for $30,000, we get to, in coordination with probate court, protect employees, protect the judge over there on the second floor, serve warrants, go on, also do this and potentially do the lean stuff. Hopefully it'll work out with, with Judge Markson and a few others here shortly.
Certainly sensitive to the security issues that need to be addressed, but we've been in conversations for a couple of months now on this warrants issue and the need there. I just wonder, I don't wanna put the sheriff on the spot, but maybe what are the chances do you see that this position ultimately will be able to address that need?
I can't forecast it this time. I'm definitely pursuing it. I'm offering it. I would, I would need the cooperation of the court to move forward with it. And that's why we've offered to have another meeting and bring somebody from the lean system to talk about exactly what we need to do and what the responsibilities of each organization would be. But the offer is certainly there and if the position was created, we'd be willing to assume it. Thank you, that's all.
Yes.
I also understand the need for the security. Overall, the, having a deputy up there would be far better than not having one. I think it'll serve a role like it's kinda serving in front of the court for these warrants and it'll be a good thing. But again, the meetings have been ongoing. They've been going on for a few months now to satisfy this warrant situation. We have the audit from, that 911 had on the warrants meeting to be out of their building. I mean, again, without that being a function of this job now, I will still not be in favor of it right now. Hopefully, we can reach some kind of agreement. But I feel like we've reached an agreement. The sheriff has reached out. The sheriff has made attempts. The sheriff is trying to fix a problem and he's being creative. He's coming up with solutions and he's being forwarded at every turn. One day it's agreed to, the next day it's not. The next day it's agreed to, the next day it's not. So at some point, that's why I say I will support this position, knowing that they will be handling that and actually thanking the sheriff for all his work. But I'm gonna say no if we're not doing that.
I would, I would like to make clear that the court has offered to take over the warrants and make it valid on its face, but their request was to have a full-time person dedicated to that. So this would be, you know, my, my solution to the problems. Again, needs to meet the approval of the law in order to move forward with it. So that's what we're attempting to do.
Mr. Coordinator, could you just kind of forecast of our options? Maybe a brief rundown and refresh us on, you know, what is the issue here with these warrants? So I was right now in the 911 building. We heard that that cannot happen, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, you can't say it cannot happen. It is happening. That's not the recommended way. The sheriff is actually doing them. It's, it's actually a shared function, ideally, between the courts and the sheriff's department. The sheriff has been doing it entirely. There have been talks about going to what's called a valid on its face warrant, in which case the warrants would be at the court. But that involves the cooperation of the chief judge. And it does, there's some things that have to be worked out. And so far, they haven't been worked out, at least to the judge's satisfaction at this point. The sheriff has a good idea and there is a need for a deputy up there. But, you know, beyond that, I can't tell you it's, it's still gotta be shaken off. But my understanding was if, if the board wanted to put the deputy up there, the sheriff would leave him available for a future solution if that could be accomplished. But, my understanding was if the board wanted to put the deputy up there, the sheriff would leave him available for a future solution if that could be accomplished.
I understood coming into today that this position was not only gonna serve the function of bailiff and protect the second floor of the probate court, but in addition to those job duties, like I said, I understood this earlier in the week to be the case that they would also, and we had Judge Digga on here to discuss, they would deal with this lean issue. And now we get to Wednesday, the committee, the whole one, it seems like half of the job description that I voted on earlier in the week is off the table. And I'm just wondering where did, where did the breakdown happen? And how can we get it back to, you know, a sensible solution where we are providing the protection for the second floor as well as, right, sees a sensible solution allowing this lean issue to be taken care of? We just lost half the job duties.
I would say we haven't lost half. I would say we've lost probably a quarter because it's, on average, it'd be about ten, ten hours a week. Some weeks maybe more, some weeks maybe less. I know conversations have been had with the chairman, myself, and with the sheriff, with the chief judge. And it's the last, since we voted on this on Monday, it's gone back and forth, changing every three, four hours. There's still conversations. It isn't like the NALO has been shut off with the chief judge. We're trying to get the meeting set up next week where we get everybody in the room and come to the agreement. But, for whatever reason, you know, that was our attempt on Monday. And I said, you know, I would vote on it, but then I would check with the chief judge and I did. I had signed off for a while. Brian had signed off for a while, or the sheriff did, and then it changed. And then I had a personal kind of direct conversation, 911 conversation with the judge last night. And he wasn't comfortable with everything yet pertaining to the lean. Everything else, yes, but pertaining to the lean portion, seems that there needs to be some details that need to be worked out.
Okay, well, yeah, it sounds like we haven't fully got our description together of what the heck we're voting on. And that gives me pause. I don't vote yes on something that, I don't have a description of a job or what we're gonna, you know, do with it. I agree with Commissioner Rube. I tend to agree that while I see the need for security, the fact that there's been a breakdown mid-week and now here we are, we're gonna vote yes on this bailiff and hope that we agree to job duties later on, that doesn't work for me. I want to know what the job duties are. What am I voting on, today or I'm voting on?
I move that we table this and wait for another month until we get things cleared in black and white. I don't think it's an emergency. We gotta have this right today and next week he's gotta be there. I mean, he hasn't had it embedded there for the last twenty years, so I don't believe it's a hundred percent emergency. We better table it. I vote that we make a resolution, then we table it until we get our team down in black and white, not just verbal.
We have a motion and a second to table this item.
As much as I want to see it, hopefully.
I think we already had a motion in support here, so that needs to be withdrawn.
So, we would have to have the motion withdrawn? I would say.
Well, if that was a motion to table, that, and if there is a second, you can, that's a superseding motion.
This was just to move it tomorrow. This was just to move it until tomorrow. So, if you say nay, it doesn't go tomorrow.
I think what we're running into is an issue where we see a need and there is a need, but we don't have the king's worked out. And that's not fair to the public that we vote yes on something. That's like, might receive our name. I'm not in favor of doing that. So, I'm glad that we are talking, taking our time and making a calculated decision on it. So, is there any other discussion?
I would just say this, Sheriff, if you would like to add in, these conversations, this is not like this conversation has just started this week. Just for background from everybody, this conversation has been going on for six months, five months, seven months.
Since nine.
And there's the whole issue with, and Caroline can add, this position, this deals with the office too and the transportation of the papers down the road to the 911 center. I mean, this is, it's not, you're right, Commissioner Holzhausen, it's not an emergency, but it's something we need to get figured out because, I mean, there's safety issues, there's making sure these warrants are entered properly and done on a timely basis and efficiently instead of driving down the road three, four times a day to drop them off.
I certainly hope we can have this worked out by next month. It's a shame that we've been working on it for two months and here we are now. Last minute, we don't have.
Yeah, well, I still consider this, if they were working on it nine months, they haven't got to settle it. And they want to settle it right now, I think, just like I said, we better table it and work on it to make sure everything is black and white. I mean, why push up and down? We haven't got, we're still gonna have to have another guy for that. We'll have to have two or three people maybe, who knows? So, we better get it down.
Commissioner Rube.
Yeah, just one final thing. For the sheriff, one month. Think you can accomplish it in a month or are we holding things up by not moving forward? What's your opinion?
Well, I think there's only one small issue that needs to be resolved and that's the question of using the ORI number for the court. In order to enter and remove the warrants, we will need permission of the court to use their ORI number. And that's what will help bring these warrants to be valid on its face. So, assuming that we can, you know, agree to that, I think we can move forward. And I think that's what the meeting next week hopes to accomplish.
So, through our talks previously, I mean, how was this not accomplished already?
Well, in addition to the big make-up, that why, what is the hang-up that the courts aren't wanting us to use their view, who they assigned to do this? Well, he didn't say he wasn't willing. He just said it needed further discussion. So, that's why we were going to bring in the, there's agreements between organizations when it comes to the use of those ORIs to establish who's responsible for the lean audits and things like that. So, that's, I think, what needs to be a little bit more clearly defined as to whose role will be walked.
See, like, right now, there's the agreement and it's everyone in dispatch is using the different courts' numbers. We moved from dispatch to a location in probate. Correct me if I'm wrong, a new agreement needs to be made. So, we passed lean audits and everything, you know, type of authorization and everything to do that. And we're running into a little bit of a territory sticking point.
I wish that he had sort of been present today to speak out his concerns, since he's been very vocal with several commissioners behind the scenes, but has yet to make himself available at any of the meetings very weak to discuss this.
All right, is there any other comments?
May I ask a question? This is involving all three courts, correct? I mean, this is the lean issue with all three courts. I just want to make sure. Okay.
We'd like to get it solved. I thought we had it solved coming in here.
And it's my understanding, two out of the three courts are in support of this idea, correct? Sure.
Obviously, the probate court is the one proposing it. And last night, Judge Digga and somebody had spoken to Judge Stewart and it sounds like he was in favor of it. I can't, I can't say, you know, that for sure. I wouldn't have the information that was said last night. We enter and remove their warrants currently at the dispatch center. The only difference would be we'd be changing locations. So. So, how do we table this with voice call?
Was there a motion to table?
There's a motion and support to table.
Well, they have the first motion and second.
Well, this was.
For the discussion.
This is superseded.
Yes, but this is superseded. If you moved it, if you moved the table and there's a second, you can go to a vote on table.
That's his voice. Who are we gonna vote on?
Let's vote on it.
Maybe we better just vote.
Matt, first, you have a question.
Okay, look, excuse me. Commissioner Holzhausen wanted the table. Who seconded that?
I do.
Thank you, Matt.
Commissioner Holzhausen?
Yes.
To table?
Yes.
Commissioner Rube?
Now.
Commissioner McMaster?
So, this is to table it, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Cascarelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Yes.
Chairman Barnes?
No.
Chairman Martin?
Yes. Passed. It's tabled. We'll move on to item B.
Oh, we're still on line.
Still on.
I would consider authorizing a youth center hire a part-time youth specialist salary, a Y S grade one, ten nineteen per hour to eleven twenty-nine per hour, for up to nineteen hours per week to fill a vacancy with starting range of ten dollars and nineteen cents to ten dollars and sixty-nine cents.
We have a motion and a second. Item B is open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of item B, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I would be consider authorizing the veteran affairs office to hire a part-time travel coordinator, salary grade one, twelve dollars and thirty cents per hour to sixteen dollars per hour, for up to nineteen hours per week to fill a vacancy with starting range of twelve dollars and thirty cents per hour.
Motion and a second. Item C, open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I would be consider authorizing the Department of Veteran Affairs to create a line item for transportation solutions and fund two ninety-one Veteran Service Program. This new line item will designate fourteen thousand current monies for use of transportation solutions when needed.
We have a motion. Support. Now, a second. Item's open for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I would be consider adopting a proposed Chillicothe County procurement policies and procedures.
The others, and now, Mr. Roth, support. Any discussion on item B? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item F is tabled.
Yeah, can I address that one just for a word? Item F, it says consider authorizing sheriff's office to hire a full-time deputy sheriff to fill a vacancy. That item and its cost is, and probably could have been made clear here, is part of item A. And where you see that cost of eighty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, that's the same eighty-two thousand dollars that's up there. That's not an additional cost. But, that, of course, with the table of the other motion, at this point, that wouldn't be necessary. But, just a little, it's not an additional. It would replace the deputy that's put up there.
We will, and G, I would be consider budget amendment eighteen dash zero four, fund the veterans' transportation and eligible for P A to fourteen funds out of balances in excess of seventy-five thousand.
Support. We have a motion and a second. Item's open for discussion.
This will cover Mr. Schneider's concern. The current monies are in excess of seventy-five thousand, so fills that void of the fourteen thousand that we needed designated for ineligible people to use transportation solutions.
Good. Any other discussion on the item? Hearing none. All in favor, item G, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Rube. Now, we'll move on to Public Safety in Courts. Commissioner Cascarelli.
Chairman, item A, I would be consider authorizing the goal of the current contract with the concierge corrections and asset recovery service. This service processes off-site medical claims to assure the responsible party is billed as applicable such as off-site expenses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Item's open for discussion. Hearing none. Item B, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item B, I would be consider approving the purchase of the M E V O mobile 911 solution from Indigital in the amount of five thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Item C, I would be consider authorizing an upgrade of the current jail camera system by utilizing advanced satellite communications incorporated, B C S security systems, which would cost the jail thirty-two thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six cents, to be partially funded by Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority by a grant received of twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. The balance would be paid from the jail commissary trust.
Support. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Cascarelli. And now, we'll move on to Health and Human Services. Commissioner Rube.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be consider reappointing Vicky Schultz to the Mid-State Health Network Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Advisory Board of Directors for a three-year term, expiring on twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion on the item?
That is still quite the board game.
All right. Hearing none. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I would be consider authorizing Health Department to hire an administrative assistant, the environmental health office at salary three, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars to thirty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars, to fill a vacancy with a starting range of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars to thirty-one thousand seventy-five dollars.
Support. We have a motion and a second, support. Any discussion on item B? All right, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Motion carries.
That concludes the second report.
Thank you, Commissioner Rube. This time, Chairman Barnes, you have the floor.
Just a couple of things. Next Thursday, the nineteenth, I believe, me and Mike Cardine, our coordinator, and Jeremy will be going to mediation with probate courts. So, that's next Thursday, the nineteenth, at seven forty-five, eight o'clock, morning, I believe it is.
Ten.
Or ten, excuse me, the other one was ten, all right. So, ten o'clock, that's next Thursday. The other thing I just want to say is that I'm waiting to hear back from the sheriff. As soon as I can get a defined time to meet with the jail over the space value warrants, we're gonna set up a meeting. I would suggest anybody that can come, come to it. Kind of like just lock the door and nobody else till we get it settled. But, I don't know if we can do that or not, but I really need to get this taken care of, this whole deal. Keeps getting pushed and pushed and we just need to get it taken care of. So, I'm hoping, it's too bad that we couldn't take care of it at this time, but hopefully, we can get it settled next week and we'll be all ready to go by the following month. As far as the ORV ordinance, a lot of people have been talking about it. Very few people have been opposed to it. Most everybody is in favor of it. The sheriff and the road commissioner are both moving forward with how they want this configured and we're gonna get Mike to put something together and we're gonna have another meeting probably in a couple of weeks, but hopefully, right about June, we're gonna have this up for discussion, something to vote on. Still a couple of months out.
Might be May.
What's that?
Might be May.
I'm sure you're kind of for June. I'm trying not to push this too hard either because, as I said, I have a lot of thought for the route. Still having a lot of problems with A D P, our payroll system, and the discussions on that. Hopefully, we're getting closer and closer to a resolution that had, but still having issues with that. And the last thing that I just want to bring to everybody's attention is that, I think it's the sixteenth of this month, the real soon coming up is our annual audit. So, just be looking forward to getting that taken care of and everything straightened out with that, kind of starting off fresh where we're at. So, just kind of some of the things I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. That's all I have for this today.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Chairman. This time, we'll move on to any other agenda items.
Just to go back to one of our members of the public that spoke earlier on, Mr. White, and regarding the consent agreement with the Speedway, I've not been involved with that. So, I'm just trying to figure out, is that in motion? Is that under review? Is that for public? Can somebody illuminate me on which court?
Two courts.
It's in the courts.
One, two courts.
I can say what I know about it anyways. So, Mr. Biggs had come to the zoning development and the Board of Commissioners and, you know, had wanted changes to be brought forward. Said he was just having a hard time making it with the restrictions that were put on it. Had talked to the sheriff, talked to the zoning board, and there's been no complaints in quite a few years. He has several, kind of a large list. What we ended up consenting to, the board commissioner, myself, and Jeremy was involved a little bit, is that we were gonna let him race two days a week, typically Friday or Saturday, Friday and Saturday, if that's what he so chooses, and Sundays as an alternate rain day. And that we're gonna allow camping on race nights and that we're gonna extend his racing season by thirty days. to extend his racing season by thirty days. If he races on Friday and Saturday night, he will no longer be allowed to race, do anything on Wednesday. So we still was keeping it at just two nights a week. We kind of negotiated it back and forth with ourselves. It was, myself was involved quite a bit, also our attorney was involved, his attorney was involved, who came up, this is what we came up with, but now it has to go in front of Judge Stewart. The Board of Commissioners will have no say in this matter, if it's going to be up to the courts, whether he's allowed this or what changes will be made from that point on, it will all be through Circuit Court.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I address an item for tomorrow's, perhaps for tomorrow's agenda?
I'm sorry?
May I address an item for perhaps tomorrow's agenda? There is a possible letter of understanding that we may be entering into, probably won't have it completed by that time, but I will complete the draft of it, and if it is approved subsequently by, this has to do with the Circuit Court Employees Association, and the use and the payout, the intermittent payouts that they're entitled to for vacation time. The practice has gotten away from what the contract says. We need to bring it back in line, there needs to be a transition period to account. I will try and have it done by tomorrow, and if so, if I could, if the Board could consider it, and then that way, when the chief judge does sign it, presuming he does, and the other parties, we can then implement it without having to wait till then, because there's some people coming up with higher anniversary dates that will be affected by it.
Thank you. Commissioner Root?
I have one other agenda item that we want to address today. I think everybody got the letter from our coordinator resigning from the nine-one-one Board. If we want to accept his resignation, make it official so that we can start the search for next month to appoint a township elected official to fill his spot on the nine-one-one Board. If so, I would make a motion to accept Mike Harndine's resignation to the nine-one-one Board to start the search for a new township elected.
This is a way of clarification, Mr. Chairman, I, there's no particular conflict with the county official being on that nine-one-one Board, however, that Board is made up of people who have specific criteria, and to be on the Board as an elected township official, given my position here, that should probably, this is meant to facilitate the appointment of another elected township official to that seat, so.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It is open for Commissioner, discussion, and we have discussion comments. All right, or questions for the matter? In that case, just a voice, all right. All in favor of accepting Mr. Harndine's resignation to be seated on the nine-one-one Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Carries to tomorrow. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, thanks for your confidence in me, and it's a good Board, and I guess we'll get a good question.
Any other commissioners with the other agenda items?
All right, I'm going to take my opportunity. I have a couple of questions about an issue that we had dealt with two months back. It's the new veteran vehicle, we purchased it for ten thousand dollars, is that what it was? Which one was on your record? The D A V van?
Yeah.
Was that ten thousand dollars that we authorized?
It was thirteen.
Thirteen thousand?
It was supposed to come in July.
Okay.
Supposed to be available in second, in July.
Okay.
And that may have been?
We heard that yesterday.
Was that where it was? I don't know.
Well, here's my concern, I heard a rumor, and it is simply a rumor, that there is a possibility that we have to give up our current van, so we wouldn't have two vans. We would just be replacing our old van with a new van. Now, when I voted yes on that, I specifically asked questions, that will we get to keep our old van? So again, we're speaking on a rumor, but if the case is that they take our old van, we spent thirteen thousand dollars for the D A V van that we could have got new for fifteen thousand dollars, so I am not going to be happy if that turns out to be the case. So I, you may have to, actually, Mr. Coordinator, could you inquire to Veterans Department to be sure that that is not going to be the case?
I'll find out what the anticipated case will be.
You can't ensure whether we're going to buy two vans.
That's all I want, I want to make sure we're not losing them anymore.
See, I was in the pressure also, so that would give us two.
Well, I do. Give more veterans.
You believe we're going to have two vans?
I believe we are going to, but if the rumor's true that we're losing one, then we really got taken for.
I'll find out.
And I want to know. And that's all I.
Where would the other one go?
I don't actually know. Because I know that was definitely discussed, it was a happy situation because we're going to have two vans.
Yeah, to transport our veterans. Okay. Well, that's all I had. Nothing else? All right, in that case, we're going to move on to our second opportunity for the public to make a comment, and we'll start off with Matthew Shepard from P. A.
There was an article written in the local media this last weekend regarding the Owasso water situation. Couple years back, then Mayor Frederick claimed that there was nothing wrong with the water, but my understanding is impoverished areas in Owasso have over the limit of lead and arsenic in their water supplies. Perhaps the Health Department and the folks could look into the situation, see just what's going on. We don't need another Flint issue here. It was stated a couple years ago that the water had been tested on a monthly basis in Owasso in their five wells, but didn't make record of all the contamination that's in the water lines at the houses.
Thank you, Mr. Shepard.
Mr. Shepard, I have information on that. I was at Owasso, Owasso meeting. Owasso water is very, very clean. Water in Coruna tests cleaner than some houses in, the water in Coruna tests cleaner than some houses in Owasso. The issue isn't with the water, isn't with the wells, isn't with their treatment facility, it's some of the older houses have copper pipes and lead soldering, and there's an issue with kind of the hookup that goes from the main to the houses. Owasso has a grant for, I want to say a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, they're going through and replacing some of those pipes that go from their lines to the house. But there are some houses in the older parts of Owasso in the kind of historical district, and I know like your Frederick's house is one alone that has, he's had his water tested and it's had a higher lead percentage, but it isn't because of the water treatment facility, it's because of some of the plumbing that goes from, through the yard and then some of the plumbing inside the houses. So it was quite, it was quite the discussion, went back and forth, a lot of, I know Mr. Makey was there, was a lot of discussion, but they're advising anybody that lives in an over home, get your, get your water tested, because you may have a higher concentration of lead. And the articles that were in M Live two weeks ago, three weeks ago are a little misleading, because they make it sound like our water that's servicing Coruna and all of Owasso is worse than Flint water, and that's not, not the case.
Thank you for that, Mr. Shepard. At this time, are there any other? You have the floor?
I just have three things here, and I'll make real quick and ask. Number one is if you could explain to the public a little bit on this bailiff issue, it sounds like there's been some dancing going around where no one wanted to say exactly whose desk is this dropped on that doesn't want to cooperate. I think that the public should know. Is it a judge? Is it an individual in nine-one-one? Who is stopping this from going forward? I think that's very important, I think the public should know. Number two, on the racetrack, real quick, I live next to a racetrack. We got a racetrack in Owasso Township. They race year-round, they race in the winter, and they're less than a quarter mile from me, and you know what? The great neighbors love them. So I have no idea why the racetrack that's been in business since the nineteen forties is having problems, and they're being restricted. Well, I got a racetrack in my backyard, and they run anytime they want to run, and they're great neighbors. And number three is on the water issue. Yes, I've been studying and writing on that for a long time. Our new water, our new water person who came to Owasso was hired a few years ago. When he first came, he came over to Coruna and he spent a whole day with them trying to find out why Owasso was so high. We were one in the top ten in the state of Michigan. Coruna has got zero lead, but they have been very aggressive in changing out all their mains, all of the things that need to be changed out. Owasso saved the money. That's the bottom line, we didn't spend the money. So now, when this has become a big issue because of Flint, Owasso is still listed as six parts per billion, that's higher than the World Health Organization says is healthy for a child. Now, there's a million dollars that the state has offered Owasso, a million dollars, to start changing out pipes that Owasso should have changed out, but they never did because they wanted to save money. So the bottom line, why Coruna gets the same water, has got zero, is because they've been extremely aggressive, changing out their water lines. When they go to a house, they get it changed out, everything is fine, but the houses in Coruna and the houses in Owasso are the same houses, same houses as in Flint, same houses as in Ovid or wherever we want to go, Lansing, Grand Rapids. So the idea of this, it's the houses, that's not true. It's the water lines coming to the hole, because all otherwise, all homes are the same in Michigan. With that million dollars, they're going to spend two hundred thousand of that to have somebody watch over the program, because they don't want to hire an employee. So that brings us down to eight hundred thousand, and they're not going to get all the homes done. So that's how that goes. So if, for those of you who live in Coruna, excellent work here, they've been doing a great job in changing out the water lines, and remember, it's same water, it's just the water lines.
Thank you, Mr. Harndine.
I will say that about six months ago, the city of Owasso did implement a program that if they were, the resident hires a contractor, it's only from the shut-off to the house, but if they replace, if the homeowner replaced it, the city of Owasso does supply the new PEX water line for it, so it's a little bit of a sound.
Thank you for that.
I think a lot more people are doing it, are aware of it, and are actually taking advantage of that, so.
Any other public with any discussion?
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead. Just simply fill out a slip for us, so we have your name, your address.
I just wanted to say, I live right by the racetrack, and I don't know which racetrack you live by, but I'm here to tell you, you can't.
Ma'am, could you address the board?
I'm sorry.
That's all right, thank you.
You can't watch TV with all the windows and doors shut. I pray for eight o'clock on a Wednesday night so I can kick back and relax, and Sunday night, people have to go to work, and if they're racing late, people ain't going to get no sleep if they've got to do a rain day on Sunday. I've lived out there for almost twenty years now, and you're welcome to come and sit on my back deck and listen to them, but it's bothersome. I can get by with what I deal with now, but I don't want anymore, and I don't want campers, and I don't want any more accidents out on the highway on Saturday nights when they leave there drunk. I hear it all, and I think somebody should have come around and let us neighbors know that that's what they were doing, because I just found out about it, and I'll fill out your page.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a made response to the woman's last observation or comment, isn't protocol when we're going through a consent agreement like that, that neighbors within a thousand feet of the proposed change are notified?
I don't believe it was. It is.
Whenever there's any special use permission, we'll help. I know that neighbors are required for the ordinance.
This is a judicial consent, it's in the courts, it's not.
There's no, there's nothing like it, it's just a causal change.
Just they let it happen, didn't ask.
So there wasn't, but it's, I'm talking to the board, it's not, if we did follow protocol as we did this, and a lot did not require that, so if he was trying to rezone to commercial and be able to run seven days a week or something like that, then all that would have been, had to have been taken care of in a different manner, but just for what he, what got changed has taken over to the Circuit Court, protocol is.
So it's not a current special use permit they're operating under, and they're changing it?
It's a court. Is the court designated back, I don't know, how many years ago?
Yeah, there's only a.
Yeah, it's a number of years ago, and really, you know, just to clarify even more what you're saying, all we did, we didn't change anything. All we did is said, sure, let the court handle it. We didn't, we didn't make any changes, and I think that's a misunderstanding that, you know, the commissioners, you know, okay, this changed. Well, we didn't okay the change, all we did was okay, the court can listen, you know, we're okay with the court listening, and if whatever the court decides, okay, you know, the court initiated, the court did the consent agenda, or consent agenda, the consent, yeah, judgment, years ago, and all you asked for was the opportunity for the court to hear it again, to, whether the court could make the change. We didn't change anything.
Mr. Holes, how's it?
I think it would have been real simple, everybody on the street, their cars, they race each other, and alls they do is have a muffler on it. I don't know why they couldn't put a muffler on it all then, this is a simple little thing they put on it, they wouldn't hear the noise on Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, or any night. I don't know where the big problem is, they should have put a muffler, just like people racing on the street, you can't have a lot of things and put a muffler on it. It is.
Commissioner Root?
The reason it's going through the courts and the reason there's no public hearing to reach out to the people is that there was, there's two parties in the agreement, we were one, along with the new individual owner, we were the two parties, so we just simply rushed, went and got our consent agreement, judgment, and then we wanted to renegotiate terms between the two parties, that's why there wasn't, I mean.
So I guess my observation, had been armed with that information when it came before us, I would have recommended that we table that and allow the neighbors an opportunity to provide that public input, whether it's required per the order.
But those are the neighbors that are in the, aren't those the neighbors that are on the consent agenda? Or is it just the judicial?
Sounds like the operator is the agreement, these are neighbors nearby that just lived near the.
And they can file some.
They can file an injunction.
No, no, I just, as a courtesy, sometimes it feels like we're leading with a chin when we can.
One of the things that hasn't been qualified is that there has been requests for everything that's been discussed in the past consent judgment, and they have been provided with that information. They have it in their hands as we speak.
Okay.
They have all that information, how they disseminate it is up to them, but they have been, I believe, three, two or three individuals have been provided that information, who asked for it, and they got it, and it didn't have to be done that way, but it was, they were provided with the information, so they have all the ammunition that's available to join in the court proceeding as whenever that happens, I'm not aware of when that's going to happen, so.
Thank you.
They have been provided, after the fact, granted, but.
I guess that was my point, it's a courtesy in our community, I mean, pro act, you're a good judge.
Mr. Chairman?
I guess I got one more thing to bring up, and these will be brought up at some point, and hopefully we can make this all short. So the deal on wind energy, I've been getting a lot of emails and a lot of calls, people asking me, vote no on windmills, vote yes on windmills. I just want the public to realize that the Board of Commissioners does not vote for or against windmills. We have, it's been almost two years that the Planning Commission has been working on the regulations of what we are willing to allow, and that's what we'll be voting on, is what regulations, whether the wind turbine companies decide that our restrictions are too lenient or too strict, and they come in and build or not, may have something to do with how we vote, but we do not actually vote on whether windmills are put in Chilwell County, and it's just amazing, almost one or.
And it's just amazing, almost one or two a day I get called, please do not vote to put wind turbines out. And that is now the Board of Commissioners will be doing. Anything else? Anybody want to say? I had to keep it short, I know, but.
Some of the echoes, kind of what I said the other day. Saying the Planning Commission, it's a rewrite of the ordinance, it's not a yes or no. I got mail today, emails today, I got phone calls, and I got a lot of letter in the mail today. Somebody up in, you know, just.
I think we all got that letter this week, so.
Any other old Commissioner business? Any other new Commissioner? All right, back to the public. Last chance, anyone? All right, hearing none. This meeting's adjourned.